Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners May 9, 2023. Meeting. First item is to Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Brock followed by me leaving the invocation. If you'll please join us.
I pledge the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands in our nation, for God, in this form, for the people, justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for allowing us the other day the business of the city of Griffin. Keep our decisions fair and just in the best interest of everyone. Keep us united as a team. In his name, amen. Yeah, agenda has presented. We have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Brock, second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please sign on my behalf. We have five. Moving into presentations and allegations. We're going to recognize George Saruta, Meter Division Lead Protection Technician as in April 2023 Strongest Work in Chain Award. David Dennison, Meter Division Manager will address. Welcome. Good evening, David. How are you doing today?
Doing great. How much I wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. George.
Chain gets smaller.
I'm gonna take a bit, but you don't need this. Thank you. And I'm reading your write-up, George, about how you're out off Maddox Road working with a customer that got under the weather and. And then you took the initiative to be with her and take care of her and. Basically comfort her and. I think you've been here now was three and a half months or so at the civilian boy.
Right, and he did that, except with customers. I mean. I, I, he's probably had him out of voice from different customers since that. He's been here only a year, what, one year. So he's been a great asset at the city of Griffin, especially on the customer side of things. He's, he's a great asset.
We're glad to have you, George. Thank you.
Yeah.
George, I believe you have your family with you. Would you like to introduce them or say any comments?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Next time it's a presentation of a proclamation of National Police Week 2023, and we have local law enforcement here to join me up front. Welcome, everybody. We have a proclamation for National Police Week 2023, May 14 through 2023. Where is there more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Griffin Police Department? And whereas, since the first reported death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including members of the City of Griffin Police Department. And whereas, the name of these dedicated public servants are engraved on walls in the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas, 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial that's bringing including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed previous year. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund 35th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2023. Whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which we will observe this year from May 14th through 20th. And whereas, May 15th is designed designated as Annual National Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be blown at half staff. Now therefore be resolved that the City Board of Commissioners of Griffin, Georgia will observe May 14, 2020, 2023 as National Police Week in City of Griffin, a public salute in service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. We hereby declare the copy of this proclamation be spread upon the minutes forward reflecting that I have guarantees as a sealed City of Griffin, City of Dicks, on the ninth day of May of the year of our Lord, 2023. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and Jessica O'Connor, City Manager. We want to thank y'all for your service and what you do for us every day. I think back, I believe it was 2014, Officer Jordan was, was killed at North Griffin. And what you do for us every single day is amazing and very blessed thing. Here to make our hometown the best place that no hard work like, hopefully one day retires. So if we can get a picture of that. All right, moving into review financial report from March 2023, City Manager Jessica Connor will address.
Good evening, just very quickly to go through sort of the high notes at three quarters of the year, so 75% of the way through. Our total operating revenue is a little ahead of that at 77.5%. And our operating expenses are much lower than that, and that total is, lost it on my page, 63.83%. And so all of that is, is good, as well as our sales tax, our loss percentages at 75% of the year, at 79.22%. And our T-SLOSS revenues are already at 90%, so the budget for that is a little under budget, but it's great to collect more than what we were expecting, and we look forward to seeing those projects move along pretty quickly since we're getting some more money.
Any questions? Thank you. Moving into citizens comment. Mayor, open support to comments from the audience. Comments you would like to consider to item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Mission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserve the right to learn comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come before the board? Good evening, welcome. You'll please state your name and address if you want.
Dr. Ashonda Jones. Not saying my address for safety reasons, again. I'll try to be brief because I do have to skip out and go across the street to the circus. So I just want to make sure I got here and gave my comments. But I want to specifically talk about a couple of different issues. One of those being the challenge that we have with affordable housing here. Something that was really frustrating for a lot of us was the situation with the land bank. We felt like after we had a community members, community advocates that were able to get seats on the land bank authority, that we were starting to see some progress. And that was even changing the meeting location from an old Confederate hospital where a lot of us were uncomfortable going to meetings to historic City Hall. When they started to inform the public more about what was going on with the land bank authority and actually putting out notices so that the public was aware that these meetings were happening and even getting together a Zoom link so people that couldn't attend the meetings in person could actually Zoom in. We thought that we would see a lot of progress when the side lot program was discussed for citizens to be able to acquire the lots next to them through the land bank. It was a point where we saw other people in the community benefiting from the land bank, not just the slum lords that were taking advantage and buying up all of these properties. It was actually giving the average citizen a chance to take advantage of the program. But all of a sudden, when more eyes were starting to be placed on the day-to-day operations. When we started speaking out about the nepotism that was involved with certain contracts going out to certain people. All of a sudden, then it became an issue, and now it's, oh, we need to restructure the land bank. We need to figure out what's going to happen with the land bank. A lot of these things that are happening in that capacity are very obvious. We have a lot of situations here where we have people benefiting from these different shell companies. For example, let me just throw this scenario out there. We have Big Bad Wolf LLC, okay? So Big Bad Wolf LLC sees these houses in these communities built out of straw. Whether Big Bad LLC, Big Bad Wolf LLC blows it down, or whether disaster happens. That person is, is without a home. If we have houses in our community that are built out of sticks, because some of them, some of them are pretty much built out of sticks, they're, they're falling apart. Whether it's Big Bad Wolf LLC that blows it down, or it's a disaster, it happens. You have one left standing that may be the brick house that can withstand what's happening. But then you have these other two who cannot. That's two out of three. Okay, if you think about it in a potential neighborhood, that's still 66% of the people that are displaced at this point. Okay? Also going into this zoning variance is coming up, and I can't speak during the public hearing part because I won't be here. But I did just want to take a second to read what was sent as far as the application, and this is just for the general public who is not able to be here. But I do want to get this on record so that they can hear it. So the question is, explain how this variance will be beneficial to the surrounding properties and general public. Says the city of Griffin has done such a great job redeveloping downtown and is committed to the success of the downtown shop owners and stakeholders. We all enjoy downtown but realize need to attract better shops, restaurants, and bars. This can happen if these shop owners are supported properly. Our property is in a neighborhood just north of downtown, within a 10-minute walk to downtown. Unfortunately, most of the current residents live below the poverty level and cannot support downtown. Our projects will not displace any current residents. We only build on empty lots. Our goal is to provide high-end, affordable entry-level homes that will attract new buyers to the city. These new homeowners will have the disposable income to properly support downtown businesses. Griffin Modern LLC has the access and ability to develop over 100 homes in this neighborhood within the next five years. We believe that these first two homes will show proof of concept, demonstrating the high-quality innovative design and affordability to attract buyers to our great downtown neighborhood. We believe that downtown Griffin and Griffin Modern LLC will be a great partnership. So I take issue with these properties on Quilly Street because I was born and raised in that area. These houses that they're proposing to build and selling at $300,000 for these properties on Quilly Street. Um, the last time I checked, it was a couple of days ago, a house was sold for $300,000. Now I'll tell you where that house was located. Buttermilk Lane. Okay, emphasis on buttermilk lane. I feel that with these types of things, we're penalizing people for being poor. It also opens up issues as far as spot zoning. And in reading this, it definitely explains how it'll be beneficial to the developer, but what happens to those residents? It's kind of saying, it sucks that you can't afford it, but I'm going to bring in other people that can. That's the type of message that it's sending. I spoke about this before at the Steering Committee meeting, when I said that I foresee us getting a lot of developers here that want to do projects like that. But we need an ordinance that's similar to what they did in Atlanta with saying, hey, if you want to come in and partner with us. Okay, fine. Let's make half of these homes really affordable housing. You can list the other half at 300,000. If we're going to do this half, let's, let's let it be 150 for people who that can act, who can actually afford it. Because do we want to see growth? Yes, we do, but not at the expense of our most vulnerable community members. The other thing we have to be careful about is, especially with the tornadoes, is disaster capitalism. Because a lot of people are playing off of that as well. I don't like to get up here and point out everything that's wrong. I do want to offer some solutions. Before we consider doing these infield developments, I feel like we should address rent control. There should be some type of targeted rent control. Think about the psychological effects when you're putting in unequal housing types. If I step out of my door, out of the straw house or the stick house that I just referenced, but I have this two-story modern development next to me. Okay? I also think that when we're talking about AMI or average median income, which normally favors developers, when they're crunching these numbers, I think they should be retooled to focus on those with far lower incomes than the commonly use 80% of AMI. We really need to be focusing on affordable housing for our most marginalized workers in the community as well. And I'm not going to make this a racial issue because poverty has no color. Understand that. What I am doing is asking you to give your own residents a chance before you start with developments like this. Because, yes, the developer quoted the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, of which I was also a part of, but when we were talking about affordable housing, we were talking about the current residents that live here. What options do we have to present them with? And we don't have that right now. I know you guys get tired of seeing me, and I do get weary of coming up here to speak, but sometimes I just don't feel like I can trust a lot of you to make decisions that morally have the best interest of our current residents and citizens at heart. So I will ask you to vote no on the zoning variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And this is some time for citizens comments. Is there anyone on my left side who'd like to come to the board that's not dealing with the rezoning that's come, or the public hearing coming up in a minute? Anybody that'd like to come speak? For the matter you're discussing, the public hearing matter, gentlemen in the back?
It's a, it's, they're here for the public hearing. That's the developer. Yes, you can proceed.
They're on my right side, like, to come to the board. There's some comments. Okay, thank you. Moving into public hearing, public hearings are conducted to allow public comments on specific advertised issues such as rezoning or it's in policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Item four is to receive comments regarding a variance from the design standards for residential infill and medium-density residential regarding architectural style and roof pitch for property located 314 and 316 East Quilly Street. Writer, planning, and development, Chad Jacobs. Well, welcome, Mr. Jacobs. Good evening. Subject House Bill 1405, I'm entering the following into record. Article four codified on Unicode. The applicant submitted to planning and development and the planning and development staff. The applicant bring before you all this evening requests for variances from Article six, section 605 B, three, subparts A, F, and G. What those are is A is architectural style, F is roof pitch, and G is building materials. These are all tied to the residential infill design standards, and this would be for 314 and 316 East Quilly Street. Now, the applicant is proposing to develop two new single-family residential dwellings on two existing vacant lots. These are infill lots due to the extreme small size and constraints of the property. This is a very suitable infill lot, so both of these, as there are 0.06 acres in size. The infill regulations are the only option which will allow the lots to be builtable regarding the lot size and house size. The applicant is proposing to develop these two single-family residential dwellings in a modern style, which is why they need to meet with the architectural standards. We need review infill, you take a look at 400 feet in both directions of the properties and take into account setbacks, square footage, and architectural style. So what they're proposing to do as you find in your application, again, it's more modern, flat roofs, roof pitch. Going to use essentially the same building material that you would see, stone, party board, but they do want to provide some accents as well. This is the application that's before you staff and reviewing this request, did take into account and review the four properties that are within 400 feet of these tracks. Did find some similarities even from an architectural standpoint. There are some very boxy two-style dwellings that are out there. So that obviously this will be in, without the roof pitch, it'll be in more modern wear. Staff is recommending approval, conditional approval of the application with the following conditions. First, the use of synthetic stucco, drive-in, exterior insulation, slash finish systems, and vinyl siding shall not be acceptable building materials. And finally, exterior elevation shall be approved by planning and development staff prior to issuance of one.
Wait, what did you say? Not be acceptable? What, what were you saying?
Synthetic stucco, vinyl, and then there's another one in there that's called riving. Drive-in, it's probably the closest thing I think of on this, this one answer question, I can meet Japan. So it, it looks like, say maybe like a brick, but it's a different type of material that's applied to it. Yeah, so there's usually moisture issues. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Does the board have any questions or comments to ask?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we approve this variance, what does that do in terms of setting a precedent going forward?
Think, obviously, anybody could come before you and ask for the same, so they could actually point to this from a modern design standard standpoint, and it would be something that would obviously have to be considered. Again, I think it's smart to kind of take these and look at these two initially and see where we're at. That's also why, in looking at the structures that were already out there, there is some similarities from the standpoint of, again, the very boxy nature of the dwellings that are out there. Again, what it states in the architectural style within infill, it says residential infill development shall perform to the maximum extent practical with existing residential development in the neighborhood. So I think that's something we didn't take lightly. We did take a strong look at that. But it is established precedent.
So I attended a meeting with the developers. And later I spoke to you about where I saw a similar house to this, somewhere in Atlanta. I can't remember, you know, just driving around. And what struck me about that particular house is that it had obviously been an infill development, and it was the only house on the street that looked like that, and it really stuck out. And I certainly don't know, I didn't go and research what the development plan and all that other had been. But my concern is the same with this. And I think I feel torn because I, I had, I think up to a point felt like this is an opportunity for development. Like if you want change, things have to change. And I, it's been a very long time since we've had permits pulled for new development in that area. So I would be extremely grateful for there to be an opportunity for new development. I am concerned about whether or not they are actually sellable. And what that then means in terms of they become rental income. And certainly, it's, it's not my right to tell anybody if they build a house that they have to, it has to be sold or it has to be for rent. But one of the questions that I did ask during the meeting with the developer is, in order for this to be successful, it has to be, they have to hit this threshold of this large number, this large quantity of houses. And so now I, in just full transparency, I'm really torn because I am concerned about there being this setting of precedence for someone else to come in and say, well, you let them do it, but you didn't let us do it. And then I'm, I'm just, I hate to sound concerned with the aesthetics of it because it is more than just the aesthetics of, oh, this house is different. So yeah, so that's just full transparency to the board members, that I, I think at one point was completely like, oh yeah, this would be a good opportunity. And and then in the last few days, I, I just feel really conflicted about if this is the right opportunity. There is a part of me that is hesitant to not say yes, just because there has been such limited development. And I, and I hate to say, oh no, we don't deserve new houses in that district because we absolutely deserve new homes. I just don't know that you're going to sell it for $300,000.
We have a big question about the value of, of the price of the asking price of that. Are we necessarily trying to, the value outside of market from there, or is it the cost of building?
We have zero control on value, so it's building cost is a factor. Actually, we've had some homes that are being rebuilt due to the storm. That was actually shocking when the estimated construction values came in on these, one specifically, a 1,500 square foot house came in with a $230,000 estimated cost. So that even, so I understand the concern from evaluations. And I can't control.
I know, I mean, I don't need to say that. I understand.
I understand the concern. We have similar concerns. It is something that we actually have debated in our offices as well. We don't want to dispose. But we can never have.
Well, and you know, I think the thing for me is, do I think that these two homes will displace people? I don't. I think it's an opportunity for someone to purchase a home in our community, so I don't think that these 314 and 316 East Quilly displace anyone. Those lots are empty. But the implications and the precedence that it sets, and the fact that in order for, for this to be successful or to max out is that over five years, you see this drastic change in, in the outlook of that community. That is displacement. Two houses is not, two houses is an opportunity. 100 houses in that same area is displacement. And so I think for me, that is where I feel the greatest concern is that, I mean, legitimately torn. Two houses, I'm like, oh yeah, rock out, let's get these two. But then what we going to do if they come back and ask for 10, or somebody else comes in and says, well, I want to put 20, and you let them put this house, I want to put the exact same house. You know, once people buy the lot, we're, we're pretty limited with what we can make them do on the lot. And I don't know, I don't even know of what Dr. Jones said is, is a thing that you can do in terms of ordinances that require you know, a market rate and affordable housing. I don't have any experience with that, so I can't even begin to touch on that, but I, I just I, I just tell y'all, I don't know. I I just tell y'all, I don't know.
So this is your district.
Hmm, I know.
So we're, I'm depending on your.
Oh, that's pressure.
I'm a real, I I've been, to be serious, I got feedback. But.
Come on, say your word.
Thank you, but same time. I don't want to be thrown under the bus and. If something bad, I mean, this is a team approaching her board, looking at this, so is it something we want to?
Well, and and that's why I think.
That's where I'm torn because I'm willing to take a risk.
Right.
If any, you get the public.
Neighborhood, the housing, I drove through there today. The sub, the the houses that. Were very slumming have since been destroyed, there's some newer construction built in the two thousands.
Mm-hmm.
Around on either side and across the street, so. There, there's. A ray of hope in that area that can be built off of all the vacant. Properties there, so this has become the foundation to build additional housing stock.
And I wanted to.
Right, but same, um.
I just.
I I I feel your hesitation.
Yeah, the cost, so, so, yeah, abundantly, I don't want anyone to think that I'm, that I'm not. That I'm like, oh, no, it has to be this very specific kind of thing, or, um, because. I I think collectively, we would all agree that like, having quality housing in any communities in this city is is valuable. And certainly in communities that are at this point deprived, so I don't think that there's any challenge to anybody. Um, I I think for me, it's it's the long term implication is just what, what does this mean in terms of? Of us setting a precedent, and then, I mean, something I did think is. Just as Dr. Jones said it, what happens if a ordinance is created after these two are given a variance? How does that affect a precedent going forward?
Whatever the ordinance.
Ordinance.
But i- it's whatever that ordinance puts in place at that time, then obviously then moving forward everything. To those new developments.
Right.
My understanding now that you build a craftsman style home. You have some flexibility on the infill development in terms of square footage based on what's. In the adjacent area, on the average, so.
What's a craft?
Like a cottage.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
So that right now. The way ordinance is set, it's kind of specific towards the craftsman style of that.
I don't know, uh, it's specific to style that's within the area, so say it's Victorian, that's the style that you're looking. I would argue that there's not really a distinct style, uh, kind of within the four hundred feet of these, uh.
Right.
So, uh, it 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 kind of, there's a couple of ranches, uh, right looking and then maybe no, like, there's one that's like a. Like a better term, cavernous approach. There's uh, some of these that are a single story that kind of have a long kind of shotgun, uh, you know, almost to certainly like the one that was built on land. You, um, Scorpius ministry, it has some of that stylistic, maybe not material.
Two story houses.
Kind of like, and you have the two story, like I said, that are very plain, uh, they are very boxy and just the only thing they have on is probably a three twelve, uh. Very minimal pitch that are on the 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 stoop out of the front, and then what's uh, kind of at the top, and some of that is. Plain box, so I I think establishing a distinct architectural style is going to be a little bit of a challenge. Uh, I understand the concern, so it's not. Not something to take lightly in terms of setting a precedent, so that's, you know, we talk about, you know, that often. And in doing these, uh, so.
Somebody else say something.
Well, I mean, I'm sure. Y'all, I'd like to have comments, but I I'd like at least give the applicant a chance before, um. During, I make all my comments, but just just what started, um. The comments about, uh, what what Ms. Jones, uh, read, uh, about. The people who live in the area, um. We care deeply about all of our residents, every everyone, all whether they live in a six hundred thousand. Or twenty thousand home, they they all mattered, uh, to us. The other board, uh, the whole, and we, of course, we want to see new development in our community. But we also want to give people who live in the community an opportunity to be able to live with some of this new housing. And when we think of affordable homes, we want to, um, for a person who would pay in. Between seven hundred to, well, five hundred to a thousand dollars of rent. That when a disaster happens in every community, I think they're looking for us or for us to. Help find some solutions to get them in a portable housing. And I don't know that this meets, um, what the needs of our community, of of that. Um, none of us, and I I hope I speak for the board. Is saying, we don't want new development on the north side of town, we didn't. Want a portable home on the north side of town, we want, want to be treated. That side of town, we want it to be treated just as we would on any other side of town, so. Is is that is not of issue, but we also want to be realistic and. Treat the people in that neighborhood, in those communities, um, with some dignity and. Not put something that we know that they can't afford.
I think that that's why we're strongly pushing for the Litec project, that would be two to three blocks north. Uh, here, uh, strongly, the staff supporting that for those concerns. Yes, sir.
Do you have a board comment?
Oh, question.
Yes, ma'am.
Aside from this development project, have you have other developers reach out if there is a demand? Out like, oh, yeah, we're doing, we want to do this too, or right now?
These are the only. This is the only conversation for these, this style of housing, um, that I've had thus far, a modern approach. Citywide, uh, and this is really the only conversation I've had. Everything else has been. Which we love, we'll take them out. We have some Gregory and his, um, six.
So this is a public hearing, the advocate might come before the board and make any comments or answer any questions. Welcome, sir, keep using your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Dennis Pickwell of Griffin Modern, L C. My address is eleven hundred, we would want circle. Opera. Um, my partner and I found Griffin. About eighteen months ago, I I had a friend. Who asked me to come down and give him some free advice on some commercial property, yeah. And he was late, so while I waited for him at the coffee shop, I had to walk through downtown. Didn't believe the safe house coffee shop. And I thought downtown was awesome. My wife and I have been looking for a property near downtown and downtown Duluth, downtown Roswell, downtown Reta, downtown North Cross. There's a lot of downtowns that are being re- revitalized. And anything close to walking distance to any of these downtowns, any lot is over three hundred thousand. But while I was at a coffee shop, I looked at my Realtor app, noticed it was some property within walking distance. Unbelievable, five thousand, ten thousand dollars. And that said, something must be wrong with the property, they're pre running through it, must be a brown field, must be something wrong. So after my meeting, I drove over. It's nothing wrong with it, they're just empty lots, just grass, empty lots that the county has owned for years. Maintains, pays money every year, year over year. Maintain these lots because the housing stock in that neighborhood is so bad and so deteriorated that it had to be demolished, by court order. And then I noticed there's dilapidated house, dilapidated house, empty lot, empty lot. A nice rentable house, a dilapidated house, empty lot, empty lot, there's more empty lots, I believe, than there are houses with proper physical property. And that's why the market for lots in that neighborhood are so low. Never seen an opportunity like this before, as I've been building for twenty five years. And. We fell in love with downtown, we like what downtown has become, and I I know, talking to people who've done our research, we're talking shop owner. And everyone loves downtown, the direction it's headed is awesome, so we thought. If we could develop affordable housing. Downtown within walking distance. That would, there would be a huge demand for that, and then I noticed you've got some weird downtown shops. It's not where it needs to be, there's some. Clothing. Donation drop off centers, there's some empty stores, there's, there's some weird place right by the corner cafe. There's a lot of property down here that they, doesn't have the commercial. Uh, tenants that it needs. And the reason is because you don't have enough people coming to downtown and supporting downtown, so. We felt like we were a good department because we need each other, you need more people. With, that could pay property taxes and have disposable income to service these downtown property, to make downtown better. We're not looking to displace anybody, we don't need to, you have probably six hundred vacant lots in that neighborhood. I'm not looking to tell anybody, get out of here, I'm gonna knock your house down. We're, we're not looking to stop before the housing getting bought. But I'm gonna tell you right now, building a fifteen hundred square foot house for less than two hundred thousand dollars is almost impossible, right? The lady that came up here, she's acting like we can force developers to come here and lose money because that's what the community wants. The market will not support that. What we're trying to do. Is a test. I'll take all the risks, you let me try these two, you'll see that these are gonna be. The highest quality homes in that neighborhood. At that price point, you won't find a higher quality home than that. We'll build it, you can come see it, if you like it, we can do more. But if you, if you say no, you say, hey, the, the C D P that we all supported. Said we need to, to have more housing stock in that neighborhood, we need development in that neighborhood, I think they said. Four percent of that neighborhood was developed and in all developments, pretty much everywhere but there. We're willing to develop, we're willing to take the risk, I know Ms. Flowers, she, she laughed at me and said, are you crazy? You want to build a two hundred ninety thousand dollar house in this neighborhood, she didn't think it was worth it, I told her I know it's worth. Because I've built these houses in Atlanta for six hundred thousand all the time. People are gonna move to Griffin because they don't have to work in Atlanta anymore, they can work from home. And this is the place that's affordable, this is the place that people can own their home. Visit downtown and love this community like we love it. We love Griffin, we think it's great. We wanna be partners with you, we're not trying to displace anybody, we're not trying to do. Anything, but I can't build portable home. There's no grants for me in Atlanta, if I build a. Twelve hundred square foot home in an eighty U, I get a hundred thousand dollar grant. I don't know for that. It's like a guest house in the back.
Okay.
They'll give me a hundred thousand dollars to build that. Griffin doesn't have such a problem. So I can't build affordable homes, maybe there is, there's there, there's companies like Michael, this is three bowls. He's buying nineteen forty eight dilapidated houses, he's putting lipstick on it, he's written amount of thousand bucks. That's what's gonna stay there, that's what's gonna happen if you say no. If you say I can't build this house and build a demand and market it to people in Atlanta and sell it and expand. We're gonna take her twenty million dollars and go back to Atlanta. It's, I don't believe I can build an arts and crafts home cheaper than I can build this one.
What type, um, obviously, I'm not that familiar with some modern style, although I do now and I have been in Atlanta, so, um. We do have struggles with dilapidated houses that we do have and, you know, do you say, what? Your model here, what does that offer as far as looking ahead for energy saving and this type of compression?
The, the only way that we can make this work. Is to simplify the plans, which we can because they're so small. We're gonna use a lot of the same doors, the same front door, the same folding door, the back door of this house. Twelve foot wide and it opens all the way up. You can walk out from the living room to the back patio. The front door is a four foot door that opens both ways, it's a pivot door. The staircase is a steel beam with floating staircases and treads and glass. I get all that for twenty cents of it all, I import it all. So we're gonna rent a warehouse, a local warehouse, we're gonna store this material, I'm gonna buy it. With my connection overseas factory, and we're gonna be able to do these very high end products. That's why I say that if anybody could come in here and build a house like this for less than three hundred thousand dollars, I will eat their hat, there's nobody that can do what we're planning to do. But to make it successful, we can't do two. We have to scale, we have to build more, and the opportunity there is to build more. I think Griffin needs more, that neighborhood. If it, if it's not us, I don't think it'll be anybody, nobody's gonna build a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar arts and crafts home in that neighborhood. Everyone I talk to from Atlanta. Other places, they see it, they said, oh, yeah, this is a no brand, this is awesome. Everyone from Griffin that grew up here, think we're crazy, think we're out of our mind, they would never invest more than a hundred thousand dollars inside of the trap. They, they think it's crazy, so if you're waiting to sell to the people of Griffin, I I don't think you're, I don't think it's gonna work. And if you're waiting.
Excuse me, when, when you, when you talk down to us like that, you think that helps your?
Oh, no, I'm not talking to you that.
You are.
When, when you.
Very much so.
Condescending. People from Atlanta. What they think about our community and the people who live here, what we think about it. You think, I can't speak for anybody but myself. But do you, do you think that helps when you sit here and tell me? That somebody from Atlanta or somebody from Alpharetta. Thinks the way that I think or people in my community think is something wrong with it? Am I supposed to look at that and say, oh, my God, people from Atlanta said we should do this, is that what you're saying?
No, no, absolutely not.
You wanna rephrase again?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know the history of that neighborhood.
That's, that's a good story.
I don't know the level of crime in that neighborhood.
That's another good story.
I don't know. What is in everyone's mind that I need in this town, I don't know what they know about it.
But the people in Atlanta, they know about.
No, that's just it, we don't know the history, we don't see it, I see that the same way I see Vine City.
Okay.
Vine City is more dangerous than that area, but I would.
You know that, now how do you know that? You just said you don't know the crime in the area, now how do you know that?
I drive through Vine City and I drive through that area.
Okay.
To me, this, this looked more safe than Vine City.
Okay, you, you got.
And I'm willing to be got.
Crime number on that area versus uh, Vine City. You just said you didn't know.
Well, I can tell you this. It looks like one third of those lots in this area are vacant, in Vine, in Vine City, they're boarded up and. They're, they're probably more dangerous.
I have a question. You talked about the twenty million dollars, we're in the coming moment, coming from, uh.
We, we would like to stay.
Atlanta, Georgia, from, uh, my.
You better ask.
First National Bank. We just talked to Mr. Smith over at First National Bank, we want to do business with him. We, um, we want to be good citizens, agree?
I would challenge that, because based on what you have said. Uh, it seems that there is a bias about the citizenry in Griffin. Um, it, no, it does, it does, and I, and. I appreciate your perspective, and and I, I will say that I think it is easy to be outside of any situation and to have. Um, a different outlook than if you're on the inside, so I appreciate that you can acknowledge that from the outside, it looks like a very different community than for those of us who have lived here. Um, but I. It, your language feels very othering, and then, um. This is some kind of isolated, you know, enclave of of like, you run into this island of opportunity. Um, and then if you don't invest in it, no one else ever will, and and this is our only opportunity and that is.
No.
No, you, no, you did, you did, and that we.
We, we have recorded this, we're recording this.
Well, and that, and that we would be at a loss if you took your twenty million dollars because there would never be another opportunity. And you're, you're absolutely right when you mentioned that our comprehensive plan included affordable housing in that particular area. But it's for the people that live in that area, not affordable for other people who are in a six hundred thousand dollar market. To come into a three hundred thousand dollar market, it was for the people that live on the two hundred block of Quilly Street to be able to move to the three hundred block of Quilly Street. So I, I abundantly. So I, I abundantly respect your position. But I don't agree with it.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, I, I apologize, I think what I was trying to say. Is that we see that neighborhood. In a much better light than the current reality. I have found that over and over again, and I apologize if that doesn't seem to be the case for you, but it was the case for you personally.
Well, can I, I'll challenge you.
Build a nice house like that in, in that neighborhood.
Uh huh, because what you said to me that in Atlanta it would be a no brainer, and what I said to you then was that anywhere in Atlanta is in proximity to Atlanta. Griffin. To Atlanta, it's forty five minutes away. So. I think the challenge there being. People will move into a. Less than ideal neighborhood in Atlanta because they're still five minutes from downtown. You're not gonna be five minutes from downtown Atlanta in Griffin. And so that, that, that is, I, yeah.
I can't move anywhere in Atlanta. Other than the city of Griffin, because it is part of the metro Atlanta area. Where a lot is less than two hundred fifty thousand, I can't.
And so, and I'm glad you brought that up, because where you have mentioned that there is this an abundance of opportunity. What I hear, you have not seen it, but what I hear is that there is an abundance of financial opportunity for your company. Not for our community. Because we are in old ages, because our land prices are what they are, because the land is untold. Because there are so many vacant lots, because as you pointed out, there are so many dilapidated homes. Because as you pointed out, only one third of it is livable, livable and habitable. What that says is that you have identified a financial opportunity, it's not that you wanna partner with us, it's that you wanna get paid.
No ma'am, our, our, our whole focus is on trying to make. These homes as, as affordable as possible. And I can, I can go to Atlanta, I could pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a lot, and I can sell these same houses. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars better, the difference is. I can't do that within walking distance to a downtown, here you have a beautiful downtown, I think it needs support. You think it needs affordable housing, we disagree. But there's, there's room for all of us, there's room for the three bulls and their little. Lipstick renovation. To, to take a house that was currently at six hundred thousand and. Put thirty thousand in and rent it out at a thousand. There's room for that, there's room for us, and there's room for affordable housing, my thing is there's, there's. Even if we were to do exceed our goals. There's still gonna be. Hundreds of empty lots. In that neighborhood. From Cherry Street to the railroad track, hundreds. We can't possibly build it all, and if we did, that's where the twenty million dollars. It would come from people that are gonna be citizens of Griffin and live in these homes, they would pay me to build their home. Not coming to China. All we're trying to do is propose to build something that's affordable. And walking the distance to us, a downtown that we love. And if, and if we don't, you know, I'm not gonna build an arts and crafts home. We're gonna sell the lots and leave. So we're not, and that's not a threat, it's not a take it early in the scenario, our business plan will not work, we're not asking you. Which we started, we wanted you to do uh an entire ordinance to allow us to build these. Low pitch roofs. And we decided after meeting, it was a great meeting, I thought. Where we would start with two. And you would come to the house, we'd test it, you see it, you get the feedback from the community, and if you liked it. Then we can talk about expanding, we could talk about other lots. This was just the getting our foot in the door. Saying, hey, this is who we are. We wanna be partners and having you say. You know, the proof is in the pudding. And that's what I thought you were here to do was to take the first step through a long relationship. But. You know, and. And the other thing is I, I. I don't wanna bring it up, but they, um. This is just a couple of streets over. You got low pitch roofs. Below the ordinance level. All over that neighborhood. It was just eight that I pulled this morning. But there's, they're all over the place, we're not, we're not asking to do something crazy. We're just asking to build a high quality house. On these two little lots. See how it goes. We spent a lot of time, we spent eighteen months. I've been down here. Uh at least. Twenty times, every time we come, we love it more. Really wanna be a part of this community, we really wanna. Join, join the chamber of commerce, great.
You gonna move on Quillen Street?
I would, I would have been down, but you know where.
Are you going to? Cause you said you love it, are you, you wanna move down here? Cause you said you love downtown, you joined the chamber, you've been down here for eighteen months, you wanna move down here?
If, if I did, I would have to go to the boards, but my wife wants.
Oh, your wife don't wanna live down here? Hmm, that's unfortunate. She, she work in the city, she don't wanna commute from Griffin? Oh, okay.
Mr. Tidwell, is there anything else you and your group have need to present to us tonight? That's all right, okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing at this time, is there anybody in the audience, like, come before the board, ask any questions, my comment. Anything on the board?
Uh huh.
Moving into the consent agenda. Um, we have items five, room nine, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Murray with motion, we have a second. Second amendment to broad. All in favor, thing in favor of considering, please signal the raise your hand. We have six zero. Moving to the regulars agenda. Consider a variance from design standards for residents in. For residential infill properties for media events to residential regarding architectural style and roof pitch. For properties located at three fourteen, three sixteen East Quillen Street.
Motion to deny.
Have a motion denied, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCord. If, um, the discussion from the comments. So. I have dreamed about the day that we have redevelopment in our side of Griffin, we've all had this conversation. And it's not exactly what I necessarily. Vision and see, but I don't, I'm not all known. As being a developer, fighting housing and things like that. And so. We've had opportunity where, whether it was the Coldwater Creek subdivision of having. A, a pod type of development, we did other developments that we have projected and we've gotten. Instead of what could have been considered a. Great opportunity, we've gotten C and D great opportunities that have filled the voids, and so. I don't wanna. Look back in three to five years. And say, what could have been? If we had taken a chance. And our personalities may not be. Exactly the same. But I hate for us to look back and say. These could have been an opportunity for us to have safe, affordable, quality. Efficient. Housing in Griffin, and I don't wanna throw it, throw the bad water out just for the sake of. Doing it, so here's something to consider. So with a motion for denial. We have a second, or we have a second, um, Ms. McCord, all in favor of the denial of the request variance, please signal by raise your hand. All in favor, please raise your hand, so it's four to over, and Murray, but it's. Request is denied. Moving into item eleven. Consider a memorandum of understanding between the Department of Community Affairs and the City of Griffin, the local Main Street Program Board Directors and Downtown Manager. The motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. Ms. Murray with motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ward. All in favor, please signal or raise your hand. Six zero. Item twelve is consider second amendment. To the power purchase contract between NEAG Power and the seizure of then adding dividend C, like the Department General Freeman tier. We have a motion to reconsider the second amendment.
Don't move.
Ms. Flowers with a motion, this board with a second. All in favor, please signal or raise your hand. Six zero. Item thirteen is consider adoption of the resolution, according to OCGA thirty six seventy two three and section thirty dash four. Code of Griffin, clearly Russian Cemetery located twelve, twelve forty one Avenue, Griffin, Georgia. To be abandoned cemetery and authorizing the city manager groups banned public funds for preventative and. For, for its preservation and protection. And for mitigation of public health and safety hazard consulting firm, which will, January twelfth, two thousand twenty three, twenty. This word with motion, we have a second. Sorry.
What a question.
For question by Commissioner Flowers.
Is this gonna be ours?
No, um, what this does is that code section, both in the state law and in our code of ordinances, allows us to say that a cemetery is abandoned. Um, which this one, most people don't even know exists, it's on that eighteen acre tract that um is also where the mill is. And um. It, we, FEMA just needs us to say that it's abandoned and for us to be able to go in and, and keep it up. Um, there's other ones that we have done some sort of help with some volunteer efforts to do that, but it doesn't make it, make it ours. And it doesn't say that we shall maintain once we do do this. Um, in our opinion, and Chief Hamilton wrote a lengthy narrative back January fourteenth, I think it was, this has just taken this long to get to this point. But it is dangerous because of the holes that have been left with the trees. Um, we're not sure what's at the bottom of the holes where the trees were, and it is a very um pedestrian friendly neighborhood in between two. Neighborhoods where people cut through that and, and we now have a fence up, which has allowed us to ask FEMA for their assistance, because we've actually expended some public funds, but they said. They wanted us to make sure that we declared an abandon so that we could say it's public funds.
Okay.
This is um Murray, your question, okay, okay, we have motion, Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner McCord, all in favor of the resolution, please signal by raise your hand. Six zero. Item fourteen is like reconsider renewal of the memorandum of understanding among the city of Griffin, Spalding County. Griffin Spalding County Board of Education, you do archway partnership participate. In the Spalding County Archway Partnership for fiscal year twenty four, the amount of twenty thousand dollars. We have a motion to approve. Ms. Murray with a motion, we have a second.
I second it. Any reason I second it last time, what's greater good?
We would love that discussion, I'm sorry, I, I mean. And I'm, I'm, I'm learning as I get older just to. Begin to just accept people. For who they are and what, and what they are going to do, they, when I, when I started to think that people are going to. React differently. Is, is me that ends up getting surprised or hurt when I, when I shouldn't notice. But I know we set up here. During the lost negotiations. And, and I just heard people, yes, with such force. And just, and just so much meaning and so much emotion. That we're not going to participate in this, we're, we're not going to be a part of this. And it was just so passionate. And. Even as I'm talking about it now, I, I know what they're going to do. Whenever the time comes, but in the moment, and. I guess what I'm saying, I believe about what I say, if I say I'm not going to do it. Uh, if I say, you can, you can trust my word, if I give you my word, this is what I'm going to do. Then I'm, I'm going to do it. And. Good. You know, with this, with this leaving it there, yeah, that's for it.
Um. I, I, I think I was the deciding vote in the last. The last time we voted. And um met with um the county and school board and um. Archway. Um. And what I realized is that. Archway is not a problem. It was the personality of each political entity that is an issue. And I think, I feel like archway have given us. Exactly what they were tasked to do. Um. If we move forward. I feel like they will do the same um with uh new leadership from the uh, that executive board and everything. We're still gonna have the same um issues. With our, our other partners. Because. One of them typically just don't know how to do right. So, but I think, I, I believe it would be doing a disservice to us. To not try, so that archway continue to do what it is that they were, they were doing what they've done for us. So. I guess it's just likely this. To have a young picture.
And to look at the projects that the higher ed has brought in the partnerships and um. When the stormwater utility comes, and I, I think they've shared with you today, the um presentation of the final report of. Um, the stormwater project in the um. Ice and branch, or not ice and, that's Springer Creek, Petticoat Creek going out of Griffin. Um, I reviewed the ten conceptual plans of what's been being done with the airport property, of the airport that was built, making it to the higher ed part and the opportunity for. Um, our. Staff will be able to mentor the students from the University of Georgia and fresh ideas perspective, I think it's invaluable.
That the only way we can do that is through artwork? And we can.
Well, actually, actually, what archway has suggested is. Probably these other issues between. Us and the county, there is another avenue to deal with that, but what. We had allowed to come in to infiltrate archway with stuff that had nothing to do with. Archway.
I agree with that.
It had nothing to do with it, now they've offered to direct us to where we need to go. To maybe for some of this other stuff.
There. Uh huh, there.
Yeah, 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 look at their effect. But um.
Ms. Ms. O'Connor.
But anyway, like I said, it's, it's. The issue is not for me now, is not archway. It's personality from the other entity. So, it's at some point, we just have, you know, put, try to put that aside and maybe have. A mediation there that will not allow that to. Overtake. The work that we were doing. That hadn't done.
Ms. Ms. O'Connor. I think you told us um. Late last year, that archway is not something that lasts for. An eternity. In most, can you, how, how long does archway?
It, it varies, but it's normally five, six, seven years. Eight, this will be our eight.
Wait, how long?
Be, before I came, so.
You're. You say it normally lasts, wouldn't?
It depends, five to seven. But I think there is one that's been longer than us.
We probably had.
The land bank is not supposed to take. Fifty years to get out the ground.
Yep.
So, but it, it, and it, it. What part of it was. But. But. Anyway, and we're still having the same issue with the same problem maker. On that, so. It's not really. I'm not gonna say it's not the land bank. Fault, because it, it went all off some, in another direction to another country, but. I, I don't know. I just, right now, I just feel like maybe we should. Not give them another try, but give archway the opportunity to try to do what it is that they're doing.
You have any comments?
The media of the archway program, what they speak, or do they know, I guess, if I'm not in great contact, do they see a lot of the issues and maybe what they get to that?
That, that's not archway's role, archway is very clear. That, and I actually point blank asked the question a year or so ago and then knew the answer, so asked it again for everybody's edification last Wednesday. Archway does not operate as a mediator. Um, archway hires a professional and their main role is to put us into communication with others that can partner with us, that's why it's called the archway partnership. They want us to learn how to partner with other resources, whether it's higher ed, whether it's local, whether it's regional. A, and that's their role, they are never going to sit in this, this building and tell us, you should have this for lost and you should have this for lost, that is not their role. It's a nut, it's an archway professional, which the reason that it became a little bit time sensitive is because we. Um, after our workshop had told them that our consensus was to move forward, and so they proceeded with hiring an archway professional or in the last stages of hiring an archway professional, so I. Did tell them very quickly after last meeting to hold on. Um, so they are sort of waiting, and that's why they had that meeting last Wednesday, they needed to know from the three funding partners, which is us, the county and the school system. If we wanted to proceed, which everybody else was in agreement to do so. Um, so they don't wanna hire somebody and then not have a position for them, so that's, that's why we were asked to reconsider it tonight.
The reasons that we have been committing worries in the process. Other than the personalities, because I'm only women were wonderful.
Very much so. I, I will say, I don't think we took as good of advantage of the higher resources as we should have in years past, the last three or four. Um, we certainly have, if you remember our bike trail, um, we have a very large master plan. Again, these are students. They don't quite have real life experiences yet, so we're helping them just as much as they are helping us. And I, I like that part. I hope that um, one of them actually fell in love with Griffin that worked on that bike walk trail. Um, and has come back on several different occasions, because he's a landscape architect, and he wants to see that happen. At the time of, of the plan, he didn't have the real world experience to understand, we're not tearing down Eighth Street Baptist Church and going go a different route. So it's those kind of things that we help with them with, but then we can also use that and put that out to bid and say, with these couple of changes, rather than hiring an engineer, we want to see what you, that would cost for us to build. Um, so it, it goes both ways.
We have a motion from Ms. Murray, second by Commissioner Flower. To renew the memorandum of understanding, City of Griffin, Spalding County, State Department of Education, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All in his light sign. Five, one, Commissioner McCord. Item fifteen is considered to any light of notice, so it's dated April twenty-five, twenty-three from Glass and Rockson Attorneys. Fourteen to state claim for personal injury for Josephine Mann and Linda Allen on December sixth, twenty twenty-two, while occupying a motor vehicle driven by Josephine Mann, in which Linda Allen was a passenger in which was involved in a motor vehicle accident with a city-owned vehicle operated by City Code Officer Jordan Andrews. Staff recommends denial on both. Plans. Do we have a motion to deny? Have a motion by Mr. Brock to deny, with, with second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor of denial, please signal by raising your hand. He tried to, he thought about it. Five, one, Commissioner McCord against. Item sixteen, appoint a voting delegate for the annual membership business meeting of the Georgia Municipal Association on twenty twenty-three GMA Annual Convention in Savannah, Georgia on Sunday, July twenty-fifth.
You? Okay, nominate Doug. Mayor Holbert.
We have a motion from, um, from Commissioner, or from Mayor Holberg. Yeah, Commissioner Flowers, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, moving into city management support.
Okay, um, very briefly, just first, a congratulations to Jeremy. The MOU that you just approved for Main Street is back to classic status. So that is a final done deal that we are back to our classic status that we have enjoyed for so long. So good work to he and Heather Robinson on getting that back in just over a year, which is unheard of from them. Um, the other thing that we need to clarify real quickly for GMA elections is your district four officers. Um, you were sent a ballot. I did not hear from anybody that you wanted anybody else listed. But just to be sure, the mayor of Sanoy, um, the would be president, the first vice, vice president would be the mayor from Central Hatchie. Second vice president, the mayor from Zebulon, and third vice president, the mayor from Temple. Are you okay with those nominees and we can send in this ballot? Or do you want to nominate someone else? Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. I also wanted to give you the good news that we received from EPD today, an agreement in regards to the Blanton Mill land application site, which you all are aware of. They agreed to the changes that we suggested, giving us more time um, to figure all of that out. So we will be executing that and getting that back to EPD. Um, couple different dates you need to be aware of. Uh, first is the Food Truck Town Hall, May sixteenth at four P M at Historic City Hall. That is at your request. So we can figure out exactly what direction we need to move as far as food trucks, so that we can even start preparing an ordinance. Um, secondly, we will have our community block party, uh, in between the police department and Station One on May eighteenth at five P M. And then lastly, we will postpone our budget workshop. Um, we are about two weeks behind, like we have been from day one. So we are asking to call a workshop on June sixth. That will still give us the week before our regular meeting, so that we're not postponing the adoption of the budget. But I would need your presence June sixth at nine A M, which is a, just the first Tuesday rather than the fourth Tuesday of May. Is that doable? June sixth, so we would have that budget workshop and first public hearing that day. The second public hearing and adoption would be June thirteenth as scheduled. We have until June thirtieth, so we're well within our timeframe. We would be canceling the commission meetings for the fourth Tuesday. We have not done that yet, because we wanted to make sure that you all were good with June sixth. Okay. Um, one last thing, I just want to, I know PD is gone right now, but um, between our fire department and our police department, starting early Friday morning with the house fire at Morris Street, continuing through Friday afternoon with an unfortunate overdose in the Walmart parking lot, continuing with a shooting at George Circle where two people were apprehended, one of which after fleeing from the scene and coming down uh, fifty feet off the roadway, down a steep embankment across a ten to twelve foot ravine, coming to rest on the other side, overturned and on fire. Um, with a lot of fire personnel and police personnel out, making sure that his life was saved. Um, it was a really busy weekend in the city of Griffin, and they have done an extraordinary job in keeping everybody safe. They also had a nine one one call on Saturday night that the person said he wanted to commit suicide by cop. And that did not happen, because they took the appropriate actions to make sure he was able to be, um, given some treatment rather than, than what was, what he wanted to happen. So they really do a very good job. Um, I was going to read this to you, but it's long, because it was such an effort to get this guy out. It reads like a movie scene. Um, for what they had to endure. Um, but you're talking about some officers. One that started in, um, or firefighter that started in December and one in February. So these are also very new firefighters that have not had a lot of training, but, but saved a guy's life on, on Saturday morning, late Friday night. So they're all to be commended for the actions that they do every single day. Um, this weekend just seemed to be nonstop. So I wanted to point that out, because they're still here, they're smiling, and they're ready to go to work.
I have nothing. Mr. Brock. Commissioner Murray. Commissioner Flowers.
Nope, I talked enough. I came here with some intention of voting to support that project.
Commissioner McCord.
Uh, it's graduation season, and I just hope that everybody, um, watch out for our graduating, whenever, uh, we won't meet again before, um, uh, graduations take place here. Um, and when I speak, graduating, not just high school. But also you have a lot of these, um, kindergarten graduations, no school, that's everybody is graduating. So please, uh, be vigilant, please watch out for the, the parties and all this stuff that will start happening, uh, in, in the neighborhoods, not just the neighborhood, but the neighborhood and just be mindful of that and hopefully, uh, our police department will stay alert and ready with a lot of this springtime, summertime stuff that occurs, uh, this time of year. So I want to commend, uh, the police and fire saving a gentleman's life. And I want to thank, uh, all of you all for standing up for our community and not allowing somebody to come in here and talk down to us. As if I'm, I'm proud of, of our community. I'm proud of, of its diversity. Um, of, of everything about it. I'm, I'm from Griffin. Born and bred. When I died, be Griffin dead. And I just, I, I just put a life in me, can't allow uh, anyone coming here and feel like they can talk to us as if we're some type of country bumpkins. And I, I just, I, I won't stand for it. So if I offend anyone, uh, I, I'm in it. So just don't bring your friends down here to talk that way to me. Make sure you know that I'm, I'm going to say something. I'm not going to sit around and let, and let people talk about, uh, the community that I love.
Want to give a shout out to Jeremy. He's working hard. We've got amazing Griffin activity going on this Saturday, downtown Griffin, the second Saturday. So um, the economic development team, everybody's working very hard. So thank you, Jeremy. We look forward to some great things that are arising, um, in Griffin, from the movie industry to to, uh, a, hopefully, a, a Brute Hall. Also want to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day to the mother. It's coming up this weekend, so don't forget your mother. So happy Mother's Day. And, um, officially, on Monday, some Griffin loses a loses a citizen. John Marsh Holberg leaves on Saturday, heading for Fort Carson, Colorado. Will become an official citizen of the state of Texas next Monday. So, second citizen John Marsh Holberg and his fiancee in, uh, Fort Carson, Colorado, for his first duty, he's signed it. Life is good. We have a motion to overturn.
We do.